Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It is 7:00 PM and I will invite you all and thank you for being here this evening. I call the meeting to order for March 23rd and I would ask my council members at this time if there's any added items to the agenda. Seeing none then, I would ask for a motion please to adopt the agenda as presented. Counselor Harper.
I so moved that we adopt the agenda as amended?
No, it's, I'm sorry.
As presented.
As presented. Yes, pardon me.
For the March 23rd meeting.
Thank you. No further comments, questions, all those in order? All those in, listen, I'm gonna start over again. I've been in meetings like since noon, bang, 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 came straight here and I am sorry, I will slow down now. First of all, I see we have some new members over at the media table. Are their introductions due?
Good afternoon, council. This is our intern Colton Swederski.
Welcome, Colton. You're with a great crew over there. All right, back to our adoption of the agenda. Counselor Harper has adopted that and I will call for the vote. Those in favor? That's Carrie, thank you very much. Moving down to presentations and delegations. We have none on our agenda at this time. Business arising out of them?
Are we gonna tell the minutes?
Yes, we are going to adopt the minutes. Page three of your agenda, item 3A, regular council meeting minutes of March 9th. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, your worship. I move that the minutes from March 9th, 2015, regular council meeting be adopted.
Thank you. Are there questions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor? That is Carrie, thank you. Now, we'll move down, there's no presentations and delegations. Business arising out of the minutes. Seeing none, we will move down to item 6, which is bylaws, page 7. And this is item 6A. All right, it is a public hearing, so I will just start with... This is the Southeast Industrial Area Structure Plan Amendment, bylaw 2015-04, Municipal Development Plan Amendment, bylaw 2015-05, and the land use bylaw, 2015-03. I will call the, I will declare the public hearing open at this time and at this time ask the development officer, I believe Ms... Who will be presenting? Can you please introduce?
Mike Friesen from Parkline Community Planning Services.
Yes, welcome, Mike. Mike is our development officer who will explain the purpose and effect of the proposed bylaws.
Um, was there the... So, thank you for having me here this evening. I thought it would be easiest for all assembled if I...
We got a screen right here.
Thank you. Perfect. I thought it would be easiest for all assembled if I gave a quick PowerPoint presentation in order to cover the background and to provide for an overview of the proposed changes. The combined public hearing addresses three bylaws, 2015-03, the land use bylaw amendment, 2015-04, the amendment to the Southeast Industrial Area Structure Plan, and 2015-05, the amendment to municipal development plan. The presentation will look at the background that brought the proposed amendments in front of us. It will present each of the bylaws in turn and I will briefly discuss referrals and public feedback before giving planning analysis and recommendation. So, all three of these amendments are in response to a subdivision called 14408, which has a report and a decision in the attach, or in the attachments. The purpose of the subdivision is to create 12 industrial parcels from the parcel in question. So, the subdivision in question has been approved conditionally, but conditions of subdivision endorsement include, among other things, the amendment of the land use bylaw from urban reserve to light industrial, the amendment of the Southeast Industrial Area Structure Plan to reflect the proposed land use and road alignment changes, and the amendment of the municipal development plan from highway and local commercial to industrial designations and to update the road alignment. The changes are required due to infrastructure changes in the southeast corner and in order to better meet market demand. The land use bylaw, 2015-03, is a bylaw to amend the land use bylaw, number 0123. This is a relatively straightforward change to the land use designation from urban reserve to industrial, as can be seen on the map. The Area Structure Plan Amendment, bylaw 2015-04, is a bylaw to amend the Southeast Industrial Area Structure Plan, which is bylaw number 2001-02, and this includes both text and map updates. So, the text updates are primarily concerned with updating the plan to better represent the town's infrastructure decisions and vision. The plan was amended in 2008 to reflect the direction the town is taking, but unfortunately, these amendments largely left the text unedited, which has resulted in some contradictory and conflicting statements within the document. Text edits were made to Sections 4, Constraints, which describes the new natural gas pipelines in the southeast corner. Section 7, Commercial Development, which discusses the change from highway commercial to industrial in the southeast corner. Section 11, Transportation and Roadways, which discusses the move north of Small Arterial. Nope, that's not right. And, I don't know, my license has expired. So, Section 11, Transportation and Roadways, and Section 14, Intermunicipal Cooperation. Let's see, so in terms of the map amendments, there are three. The land use concept changes the very southeast corner commercial area to industrial and moves the roadway slightly north along the bottom there. The transportation system adjusts the roadway. And the water system was updated to align with the newly proposed road layout. The Municipal Development Plan Amendment, bylaw 2015-05, is a bylaw to amend the municipal development plan, which is bylaw number 2007-22. This includes a map adjustment for the land use from highway and local commercial to industrial and it adjusts the local transportation network as seen in the map. In terms of referrals, the notice of hearing provided opportunity for viewing and comment. There was one phone call with an adjacent landowner to clarify the subdivision with no concerns being noted after they were assured that their land was not being impacted. Referrals to various agencies were undertaken as a part of the subdivision process with any concerns being addressed in the conditions of subdivision themselves. In terms of planning analysis, really these amendments are concerned with the land use of the corner parcel and the change from highway commercial to industrial. So, there is some new infrastructure that limits the feasibility of commercial development adjacent to the highway, which is the natural gas pipelines. Alternate sites are still available for development of commercial to the north and eventually to the south of the area in question. And the change in designation still fits with the general purpose of the plan, which is to provide more industrial land for the development of Olds. The new road alignment provides opportunity for smaller lots to meet market demand, which in general will result in a higher assessment for the town, as smaller industrial lots generally have higher assessment per acre. In terms of planning recommendations, I humbly recommend that council approve the amendments to the land use bylaw, Southeast Industrial Area Structure Plan, and Municipal Development Plan by giving in second and third reading to each bylaw. I'd be more than happy to answer any follow-up questions that the council or the public have, best my ability. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I will now explain the procedure and rules to the public hearing. Presentations before council shall be brief and to the point, limited to five minutes. Council shall not allow cross-examination of persons giving information and it will not be necessary for persons giving information to verify his or her qualifications. Council may ask questions of the speakers after each presentation for clarification purposes. No debating or questions from the floor will be allowed and no written or verbal submissions will be received by council after the public hearing is closed. Persons addressing council will state their name and address, indicate if they are speaking on their own behalf or for a client, company, or citizen group. I will now call for the first time those in support. Second time those in support. Seeing none, I will call for those opposed. Second time for those opposed. I will call for the first time persons deemed affected. And second time for those persons deemed affected. Nice and quiet out there. Very good. I will open the floor at this time for any of the council comments or questions. Okay, and I have Counsel Durie.
Thank you, your worship. My questions, I think, are probably mostly for clarification, but on page 12, it talks about the definition of light industrial. And it says that we can move to that particular designation as long it does not cause any external objectionable or dangerous conditions beyond the parcel boundary. I just, I just need that to be clarified a little bit.
Was he clear enough for you?
Page 12.
Of our agenda.
Of our agenda.
Debbie will help you.
So, yeah, that's taken directly from the land use bylaw of the town of Olds to provide an area for light industrial uses, which are compatible to the area to contract and uses which do not cause any external objectionable. So, this is in contrast to heavy industry, which generally causes pollutants that may affect the environment and neighbors to a greater extent.
Supplemental?
Yes. Yes, thank you, your worship. On page 13, you talk about a municipal reserve, 9.28 acres of the 92.8, 80 acres, excuse me.
Yes.
Was there, do we have to provide for a bit of a reserve or is it just, it says appropriate financial compensation?
Mm-hmm.
How does that work?
So, 10% of the subdivided parcel can be taken in the form of reserve. Generally, in industrial developments, the full 10% is taken as cash in view, as per the municipal development plan. In this case, there was an opportunity to take a small amount as land as well, and that was advised to me by town staff upon my recommendation, that was a good idea. So, we get a small parcel on the western, sorry, the eastern edge that will be town municipal reserve, provide a small buffer between the highway and the rest will be taken as cash in view.
Thank you, your worship. On page 14 of our agenda, the town of Olds, I assume, is the developer, is that correct?
No.
Okay, well, it says, it says, "Town of Olds slash developer will be solely responsible for the construction of the intersection." So, so if we're not the developer, then those people who put their industry on those parcels will be responsible to, for that intersection?
That was part of the development agreement between the town of Olds and developer in question. This was a requirement by public transportation to show that the province will not be responsible for funding intersection improvements.
Not, 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 not the moment, your worship. Thank you.
Okay, well, this is your last moment, because I'm going back to the development officer for final comments. Would you like to further comment? Are there other comments on this thing? Okay. All right, final comments from the development officer.
None.
None to see, all right. Therefore, I declare this public hearing closed. Now, if I could ask council to please move back to page seven of your agenda and we will move forward with a resolution and we will pass these bylaws, second and third reading together. Counsel Vereschel?
Thank you, your worship. I move that... Do you wanna...
Yeah, we should be able to do that.
So, I would like you to give second reading, first only, and then I will ask for another motion for third.
All right. I move that bylaws 2015-03, 2015-04, 2015-05 be given second reading.
Does council have questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor? That's Carrie, third and final reading. Counsel Overwater?
Thank you, your worship. I move that bylaws 2015-03, 2015-04, and 2015-05 be given third reading.
Okay, thank you. And I will call for the vote then for third and final reading. Those in favor? That is Carrie. Thank you very much for your explanation with us, sir.
Thank you.
I would like to move item, item 8C, page 131 of your agenda, please. Olds Splash Park up into our agenda at this time, please, and ask Mr. McGinnis or Mr... Who's going to introduce our guests?
Mr. Wegseth. Well, I think he may have a bit to say beforehand.
Your worship, normally I would use the mic with my voice, but I think everyone would need it today. Forgive me if I'm...
Do you need some fishermen friends?
Yes.
I have some.
As was presented with the PNP, your worship, there is some review here for council, just to bring us up to speed to what's before us today. The Old Splash Park Association has been doing a great deal of work, working both in fundraising and design proposed for Centennial Park, for the Old Splash Park. Again, the background being that as far back as 2009, there's been a number of sources cited that supported the taking consideration for a splash park in the town of Olds. In 2009, it was suggested that a skate park and a spray park would, would help Centennial Park transform into a recreation amenity for our community and that that was something that should be considered out of that report in 2009. Further to that, in 2009, the Mountain View Regional Parks Recreation and Culture Master Plan, it had a recommendation to consider the development of a spray or water park in the next five to 10-year timeframe as a core community project. Following that, a number of years later, a great deal of work went into the Olds Open Spaces and Trails Master Plan and again, a water or spray park was one of the recommendations that was to be considered. One of the key findings from the sources, then if we recall, that went into that master plan, there was an extensive survey done with the community that did cite the Splash Park as being one of the top three key findings. And, you know, right, the third was right up there with what we hear from our parks and trails, as well as our inactivity of our network. So, it was one of the more, it's been sustained in its, in its support over some, some time here over the last, you know, five to 10 years. We did review of the PNP, the ANYA operating impact, and that's been, again, in discussions with some of our other municipalities that have similar splash pads, have indicated a range somewhere between $30,000 to $40,000 in operating annually. Just to review the capital process that this has gone through to this point in time, again, in the Mountain View Regional Parks Recreation and Culture Master Plan, it speaks to identifying core community projects as this would fall under that category, has been identified in the master plans, is that type of project that would be considered a core community project. And again, it was documented in those different independent master plans that I had commented on earlier. In a core community project, if we were following accordingly to the Mountain View Regional Parks and Recreation and Culture Master Plan that the county of Mountain View has developed with its municipalities within its geographic area, the formula that that states would be 72% of town of Olds and 28% county of Mountain View contributions towards such a project. So, any municipal contribution in agreement would be, in model, would be following those percentages, with each jurisdiction being responsible for assembling the required financing for such a capital project. As such, the town of Olds is the primary jurisdiction. We will own the Splash Park upon completion if such does go forward. And as such, we would also hold the construction contract and any operating costs following the opening of the, of the park. The Old Splash Park Association, though we're gonna get into some numbers at this point in time, has been requesting $250,000 of municipal financing to assure its gap that is, you know, close to being able to have the financing in place for construction of the capital As you've become well aware of their efforts within the community, they are a motivated group of, of local individuals of varying ages that have been working quite diligently and they've been before PNP previously. They came in November, in November, and shared their vision of the Splash Park in Olds. And at that point in time, council provided the town's general support for the development of a water park place center in Centennial Park and supported the association's applications for grant funding towards this project. Here are the, the Old Splash Park financials for their fundraising as of this morning, and they were updated actually twice today as, as things had rolled in, so we were able to give council the most up-to-date financial information possible. The in-kind donations to date are 20, $64,000 of a budgeted $75,000. Cash and equivalents, that is dollars that are in the bank, $197,806. And for those accountants like Garth, right down to .36. The remaining pledges, which we will go down and break through, is $101,524, which is what they have had individuals or corporations pledge to them in, in, in writing that they would, you know, commit a certain amount. So, of that, they have $101,000, just over $101,000 is yet to be collected. But there is an notation to that, and I do want to give a little bit of explanation before we go into the next slides about that. Of that amount, as the town, we consider three things to be as good as money in the bank. One of those is other not, other government money, so grant money. There isn't any of that in that figure at this point in time. But the other two things that we consider to be as good as money in the bank is service clubs within, in the community that have committed a financial contribution, as well as foundations of corporations or private foundations that have committed dollars. So, in that amount of $101,001, is almost exactly half of that is monies that we would consider to be as good as in the bank. And I will get into what that great breakdown is in the next couple of slides. And then, with a $250,000 contribution, if that was to be accepted by the municipalities, the remaining fundraising required at this point in time today would be $11,669. And again, for Garth, .54. Garth's not laughing at my humor. So, that puts them extremely close. And there are a number of things that they have left for fundraising. You heard at the last Policies and Priorities Committee meeting, the Spring Flank, and the Olds Splash Park Association is one of the, one of the groups involved in that. They also have a number of other fundraising, I would say, irons in the fire that they're still working on. And they're still actively fundraising, you know, beyond that. They are also working with Mountain View Power. Those dollars are not included in those pledges, but if they are able to successfully complete a recruitment drive that they are working with Mountain View Power on, there is potentially another $10,000 on the table that they are working, working towards with Mountain View Power. And the Old Splash Park Association has applied for CFIP. That's the Community Facility Enhancement Program Grant that is still submitted at this point in time. So, this is what it looks like for those visual people that would say, "Well, where's that at on a chart if you're trying to blow the thermometer up and fill it up?" As you see at the bottom, they're raising as a cash, $64,000 in kind in the middle and the light blue in the top is what they are converting into the dark blue in the bottom in liquid, in liquid cash. So, that's yet to come. So, this is the breakdown. So, what President, the Old Splash Park Association, Brian McDonald, did, you know, for administration and council, was he did a breakdown of what would a very positive outlook for their fundraising be and what would sort of, if, if things were to dry up quickly, you know, what would that look like? So, this is the glass half-full, the positive piece. What would the contribution be if the $125,000 CFIP grant, keeping in mind this would be the, you know, the upside, if everything sort of came through the way they would like, $30,000 of the Spring Flank and a CFIP grant, and they completed what they expect to for their goals of fundraising, which would be another $30,000, it would actually bring down the amount of, of dollars required from the municipalities, down to $57,000 and $20,000. So, that would be the optimistic, you know, glass half-full. So, glass half-empty, what would that look like? If there was no CFIP grant, if, if in the environment that we're in in the province that the Splash Park was not to receive the CFIP grant, what would that look like? And if in the Spring Flank, a modest, they're confident, the service clubs as well as the groups that are involved, they're confident there's going to be some funds come out of that, it's not gonna be zero. If a modest $15,000 was, was derived out of that fundraising, and they still worked hard to ensure that they did their end in fulfilling their commitments of $40,000, what, what would that look like? That would mean $155,000 required from the town and $51,000 from the county. So, those are sort of the, the two ends of the spectrum of what the next stages of the financing for the Splash Park could certainly look like, or anywhere in between those, but certainly that was the, the look of the rosy, you know, the glass half-full. And the, if we had to really roll up our sleeves and, and work with the Splash Park Association to fulfill their, their fundraising pieces, this is what it would look like. So, again, in kind, just to share with you where that in kind is, is coming from, you know, local companies again, and local citizens have really stepped up with this project as they do with many of the projects we build in the community. These are the in-kind contributions that have been donated to date, and there are still a few more out there on the smaller, smaller end that are being worked on. But this is the significant amount of the, of the land prep and the base prep for, for the Splash Park. And then the outstanding pledges. Again, when I mentioned earlier, about 50,000 of that being considered as good as in the bank. It could even be higher than that, depending upon how, how risk averse you might want to be, would be closer to the 50, but it could be as high as 70 or 80. And here's what I want to explain about that. So, they have $101,000 in pledges remaining to collect and turn that into... So they have $101,000 in pledges remaining to collect and turn that into cash. $20,000 of that is a pledge from the Lions, and we consider that to be as good as in the bank. That's a pledge from one of the local service clubs that has committed, and they put in writing that when construction starts, so when the ground breaks, that's when they will deliver their $20,000. The Mountain View Credit Union has dedicated this year's golf tournament and its fundraising proceeds to go towards the Splash Park Association. It has estimated to the Splash Park Association a historical value of that donation in $20,000. When we calculated, and I said $50,000, I cut that in half to be conservative, just to say historical is great, that's a good rule of thumb to go after. But they're pretty confident that even if they had a downturn in their fundraising golf tournament, that they would still, you know, come through with half of that. Again, Penn Growth, they have given in writing that they are going to be contributing $10,000. Again, that's one of those ones that comes through when your project starts, they then hand over the money, so that is as good as in the bank. Scotiabank, similarly to the Mountain View Credit Union, they have dedicated their fundraising proceeds this year to the Old Splash Park Association, and they estimate that that will be valued around $10,000. Mountain View Power, again, that's not within that $50,000. This is one that, yes, the group they're working with, Mountain View Power, is certainly an organization that we would consider to be, when they say they're going to contribute as good as in the bank, but this one has a caveat on it that the Old Splash Park Association needs to do some recruitment in order to earn that donation. And this is above a $5,000 donation that Mountain View Power has already provided. Mountain View Dodge has provided an in-kind vehicle valued between $8,000 and $10,000 to the Old Splash Park Association that is then going to be used to leverage and liquidate that into cash funds. And then the others are significant still for those grateful that those groups within the community are donating. There's another $5,000 from each, from two private companies within the community. And then there's a combination of just over $10,000 for groups within the community themselves. That's 16 businesses in town that have $1,000 or less in contributions. Again, as for our accounting purposes in the town, even though those are reputable small businesses in our community, we don't count that as cash in the bank until there's cash in the bank. However, those are 16 small businesses in the community that have given commitments to this project that together total just over $10,000. And then just over $3,000 in the 250 to 1,000 range. So that's the breakdown of the $101,000 to give you an idea of how close they're able to close that $100,000 that they today already have committed. And before I introduce our guest today, just to review the pending schedule that the Old Splash Park Association had put out when it began this process in January, as far as putting out a request for proposals for construction. This was the ambitious goal that they had of having a Splash Park built and open for this Canada Day for the community to enjoy for the summer. And then they back up down to today, what's before you in council for debate today. At this point in time, I'd like to introduce from the gallery, I'm sure they'd be willing to answer some questions and say a few words towards this project as well, the President and Treasurer of the Old Splash Park Association, so President Brian McDonald and Treasurer Lindsay Martenson.
Thank you. Well done. Now you can save your voice for a little while. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. McDonald.
Your worship, Council. Thanks for having us. It's not that long ago we were here.
That's right. Did you want to either take the mic out of the holder or stand to the mic? And I will, did you want to open with anything, Mr. McDonald?
Just a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to apologize that all of Doug's numbers are wrong, because as he said, they changed three times during the day, and from the time I was driving up here, we received another $4,000 in donations and collected about another five in cash. So your numbers aren't quite accurate, but it's all in a positive direction.
That's okay. He made a couple of mistakes from the sheet anyways. We'll hold it.
Secondly, if ginger heat starts stepping or sneaking up behind me, please warn me, okay? So no, I don't really have any opening remarks. Doug, you did a tremendous job in covering the presentation. The numbers are what they are. We are confident that we can get this thing done and get it built for the budget dollars that we've said. The critical path of the project is to order the spray features. These guys, pardon me, these guys here are long delivery items, and in order to meet our schedule, we need to get those ordered. Everything else is basically a slam dunk. This is the critical path. Lindsay, anything, Doug?
Nope.
Thank you very much. All right, I would just ask you to stay for a moment while council has questions, and we'll start with Counselor Bennett.
Thank you very much for the presentation, but this is directed at administration. Correct me if I'm wrong, but did Mountain View County say that this was not going to be new money? The $70,000 or thereabouts?
No, that was the hospice. So this goes to county council on Wednesday.
Wednesday. So have they committed? Not yet. So, okay. We can't speak on behalf of what the county does, can't assume whether they commit or not, but it will go to their council tomorrow. Today's, see, today's only Monday. We shouldn't have so many meetings in one day. Very good. All right, Counselor Harper?
Just for clarification, and this is addressed to Mr. McDonald, so are you indicating now that the budget is in that $613,000 mark for the Splash Park, or is it the $550,000? And perhaps Mr. Wagstaff is looking this way.
Through your worship, it's, what happened is when we went out for the RFP, we put the, we like it in for $550,000, and we had indicated that there was a budget of $75,000 for in-kind contribution. When the proposals came back, all the bids came back proposing their $550,000 in addition to $75,000 of in-kind. So the goal is $625,000 for construction cost, because it's $550 for the company to build. In addition to that is $75,000 value of in-kind. Your worship, if I may?
Yes.
Counselor Harper, just to add on to what Doug said, when we first put our budget together, if you recall, as you say, the budget was $550,000. At that point in time, the Old Splash Park Association had committed to raise $350,000. When the bid came back at that $600,000 level, we adjusted our fundraising program upward to meet the $50,000 shortfall. So in terms of actual numbers, they haven't changed, it's just that we've committed to raise more money.
Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, worship. Mr. McDonald, okay, so I know in your first presentation, you stated that you would continue, your group would continue to fundraise year after year. How would you monitor that as, you know, as people grow, they move, their kids grow up, they don't come back to Splash Park? How are you going to sort of monitor that or have provisions so that that continues to happen?
Counselor Overwater, I think that, again, from the beginning, if required, we will as an organization continue to raise to cover operating costs if required. As far as how we're going to do that, I don't know. We haven't thought that far ahead. We're focusing on getting it built and seeing how things fall out. I'm not sure what the exact methodology would be to raise additional money, but we certainly, if required, we will do that.
Supplemental, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. It's just, just because sometimes these projects, you know, you can always build it, and it's like you can always build a building, but it's the operation of it thereafter. And a lot of times, you know, there's a lot of gung ho and everybody's enthused to get it going, get it built, and then after that, you know, a lot of times, the associations, they just sort of wither away and sort of dissolve. So that's why I was wondering how you had planned on guaranteeing that, you know, there would be a fundraiser of sort each year. That's pretty hard to guarantee that, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's right. I cannot stand here with my hands on my heart and guarantee that we will raise the money to cover the operating costs. I certainly can assure you that we will try our best to help cover costs through fundraising activities, again, if required. I don't, I guess I'm hesitant to say that those annual costs are going to be what we've shown, we're a little bit pessimistic there maybe, but there will be a sag once this thing starts up. People are going to sit back, take their shoes off, and reflect on what we've done, and then we'll have to go forward and see what else is required.
Thank you. Counselor Harper?
This question is actually for COO, Mr. Wagstaff. In reference to the operating costs, it's estimated approximately $35,000 a year. Is that a pessimistic cost?
A little bit. I would say it's middle of the road. You know, being pessimistic would say 50. Talking with colleague in Tabor, those were almost his exact words was, if things really don't work out, he said, "We're looking at 50. If they work out well, we're looking at 25." They budgeted 35.
Supplemental?
Just that I believe that the community is behind this project. I'm not sure what the process is for tonight, whether or not we make a motion to move forward. My concern is if we make the motion tonight, perhaps the fundraising would go down. I'm not sure if that would happen or not. The annual costs of, I'm going to say, a pessimistic cost of $50,000, although it is a sum of money, it is far less than, I believe, $400,000, $500,000 that we put in to subsidize our sports complex, or far less than what we do to subsidize the cost of our aquatic center. And the Splash Park is just one more piece of the puzzle to attract young families to our community.
Thank you. We'll go with Counselor Dury and then Counselor Overwater.
Thank you, your worship. My question is directed through the Chair to Administration. The amount of monies that would be put forth by the town, has that been budgeted for? Is that, is that in our present budget, or would the need be a spring adjustment? I'm just not sure about finances, and if it's not appropriate to ask that question, just...
No, certainly through our budget presentation to council, and I believe at the P&amp;P, it was suggested that it would have to be a budget adjustment, a spring budget adjustment. And in the background material in the RFD, it does suggest a 2.25% increase would be required.
What is one mail rate? What is one tax rate? 2.5% increase, what's one?
About $80,000.
$80,000? 1% is $80,000, and it would be 2.5%. Okay. Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, worship. It's just a statement. I like the idea of a Splash Park. I think it's, it just sort of makes our community more complete, having that downtown. I think it would bring, you know, I think it would bring some, an economic impact to our community. You know, when families come, they spend the day at the park, they shop, they leave dollars in our community, which is good. So, yeah, I just, I like the idea.
Go ahead, Mr. McDonald.
Just to come back to you on that, Counselor Overwater, we, last week, I think it was Monday or Tuesday, received a Facebook, what do you call it?
A chat?
A chat from a young lady in Sundry. Her name was Amber Jenkins. And she wrote us a letter and said, "How can we in Sundry get involved in this? How can we raise money? We are going to come to Olds, our kids are going to play in that park, and when we're there, we're going to shop." So I think it pretty much says it all, right? Exactly as you said, it's a really, really a boon to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Counselor Walsh, and then I'll ask Counselor Barishon.
What are you going to ask me?
I'm going to ask you if you can make your make a comment so that we can go around the table.
I'm just looking at this. Kudos to the organization that's raised this amount of money in such a short amount of time. I'm quite impressed. And for me, the 180 we've kind of committed to, and the 2.5%, that's a raise in taxes, and that concerns me a little bit because I've got feedback from people on a fixed income, just how much they're paying utilities before taxes have even gone up. And just from knowing what's happening here in the near future, that utility bill's got to be even more. But overall, I support this, I support the work that they've done. I'm agreeable with Counselor Overwater here. It's got to bring people to our downtown core. It's got to populate that park during the day for a few months of the year, hopefully. And it sounds like this is going to be a hot year, so maybe it's a good year to do it.
Thank you. Counselor Barishon?
Thank you, worship. I will admit, right from the start, years ago when I did, I didn't get it, right from the start. You know, and I told you that on the phone, and I was very honest, and I said, "Brian, when you asked me," well, I call him Mr. McDonald because of his age, "but when you said to me, you know, what do you think about this?" And I said, "You know what, at least, you know, in order to sway me, come to me with, come to me with real costs and what it's going to cost to operate it, because it's not going to be the build." Well, it is kind of the build, because it's going to be a, and, you know, I'm concerned particularly about what we're going through and our problems now with trying to decide what the difference between needs and wants in our community. I have to say that, in my case, that, you know, I'm probably not going to spend a lot of time at Splash Park, but that's not about me. It's about the community, and I was sort of surprised that there wasn't a whole lot of pushback from people. I did receive one or two calls over the course of the time, but I've been impressed with the group, and I've been, and I fully understand, you know, the passion shown and the economic benefit of what it can bring. I know that now that it's getting real, and we're going to have in the paper, hopefully they're not going to focus on the increase, but probably there are going to be some talk in the community about what it's going to be, the impact on taxpayers, and that's going to be the message that we're all going to have as council, we're going to have to manage and defend, and every one of you in your group is going to have to defend it, because not everybody, not everybody is going to be happy with the fact that we're going to see that. But, you know, we're going to be selling, I'm sure, as most of our counselors and the ones that I've spoke to, understand the benefits of this. And, you know, I'm, right from the engagement process to how we saw some young people, younger families, you know, like Lindsay sitting next to you, standing next to you, and some of the other ones who really got engaged in this process and through your leadership, you know, making things up through your experience and understanding how the process would unfold, I do support it. And I hope that now that, when we decide, make our decision, that, you know, that we go up and we sell the benefits of this and it ends up being a real positive thing. I do have a question about the contingency, and so you've got nothing built in there. Now, my concern, I guess, my concern would be, be in the, sometimes I can be a little bit of pessimist according to my wife, but, you know, if I start thinking about, you know, if you fall short, is there, and your goal right from the start was be to have that facility in play, so to speak, by Canada Day. If you fall short, is there a plan? Is there a plan to scale back on a few things, or... Is there a plan to scale back on a few things, or, um, you're just going to ramp things up and get it done? And I know the kind of person you are, you're ramp things up, get it done kind of person, and the people you have on have proven that, but I do have, I just wanted to ask that question.
Go ahead, Mr. Wagstaff.
Through your worship, um, it, surprisingly, I'm actually surprised that there hasn't been the question of if there's only $11,000 to go. And in the presentation, that said that would draw down the town contribution. That question hasn't come forward yet, but that's the answer, is that before you was a request for a maximum amount. Uh, and you heard, uh, from the Splash Park Association about their motivation, continue to fundraise with a goal, uh, you know, toward 400,000. And, and that's their goal, to keep, to keep trying to fundraise. The contingency, though, was presented as zero. Uh, if, if we were to continue to see that fundraising come through, um, there is a contingency there built in, um, that way, that the full amount, if it was approved by each of the municipalities, brings it well above the 625,000. The analogy of municipal money being the first, um, last money in and the first money out is what would become a reality. So if not all of the municipal contribution is required, uh, that is something that we will draw last off of, is the contributions from the municipalities. Sorry about my voice. So I hope that, that helps sort of draw the picture for contingency.
Thank you. Counsel Durey?
Thank you, worship. Um, I'd like to commend the committee for all the work that they've done. Um, I look forward to the time when there is a splash park, fully paid for. Um, my grandkids are coming up in late June, early July, probably right around the time when, um, the splash park will be up and running, hopefully. Um, so, so I, you know, I, I'm very optimistic, um, but I also realize too, that we have a responsibility to our taxpayers. And, um, if, if, if there was to be a bit of a delay, um, I wouldn't feel too bad about that, but I do want to see the project be completed, um, so that the town can enjoy, um, the fun facility that it is. We, when we go down to the United States, we visit, uh, Splash Park with our grandkids, and it's a lot of fun, and they enjoy it too. And it does bring...
They say, "You enjoy it first."
Okay, so I'm going to revert back to an earlier comment made by Counsel Barishell, when he's tripping through the splash park in his field. Anyway, I don't, yeah, I would, I enjoy it too. Um, so it's, thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. Uh, nobody else over there? All right. Okay, I have a, oh, go ahead, Mr. Wagstaff.
If I may, your worship, there was a question asked before the meeting, uh, and I did, though it was not part of the presentation, I was able to, uh, you know, find an answer to that. And it was what the town contribution has been towards, uh, the skate park as well as other playgrounds that we, that we build as a percentage. Uh, so for the most recent ones, if we take a look at, at Destiny, um, it, the town contribution was 41%. A $25,000 contribution, it was 41% of the project. The skate park itself, the town contribution of $50,000, was 30% of the, the budget for the build. And, and for the rotary in the vistas, it was a 50, uh, 50% contribution from the town. Uh, this project at 180,000 on a $625,000 budget is a 29%. And I believe that's rounding out 29% contribution. So it's, it's in the same range, if, if anything, lower on the low end of, of our contribution towards, uh, playground, play center projects.
With all due respect, um, that is awesome, but do the other projects have, uh, annual operating fees?
Certainly not to the same extent, but they do have an annual, uh, replacement and upkeep, which, um, which would be shorter than, than this type of project. Not the skate park. The skate park would have a longer life, uh, but the playgrounds themselves would be a shorter lifespan.
Okay. Just a question, and perhaps, uh, Mr. Lucas could, can help me with this one. Um, my, my question is with regards to the CFEP grant. Um, now, the province, um, I would like to know, do you know where the province allocates those dollars? Is it in their general revenue? And if not, or, Mr. McGinnis, do you know?
It's gaming revenue.
I agree. So then it shouldn't affect the budget, in my opinion. I may be wrong. Uh, therefore, I would likely, uh, I feel like I'm going to be drafting a letter to the province, um, in this regard, um, put some thought into what I want to say on behalf of council, and I certainly will let you see the letter first. Um, and because I don't think this is going to affect the budget, this is lottery money, and that's exactly what I wanted to hear from you. So, um, hopefully, we won't have to wait until after June, because it's lottery money not affecting the budget, so... Yes, Mr. Wagstaff?
I also recognize, your worship, that you, uh, you have the final comment, so if I may make a couple of comments to the...
Certainly.
To the recommendations that were before council today, they were intentionally put into three parts. The first part, uh, was, uh, the financial request, uh, for the contribution of 180,000. The second part was to follow, if, if that first one was successful, then to be an administrative, uh, almost a housekeeping, to direct administration to work with the splash park, uh, to ensure some of the finer details are, are cleaned up. And then the last part, which is, speaks to a couple of the questions that were asked earlier about, uh, County of Mountain View's contribution, as well as any other fundraising contributions, uh, yet to come. The last part was set up to give the flexibility to council to be able to, if they agree and would like to see this project proceed, that it would direct administration to not proceed until the financial, uh, pieces are in place appropriately to cover the construction. So they were intentionally split into three pieces for council, your worship, so that you would have that flexibility to make separate decisions, uh, on, on each of those phases of the project.
Thank you. Counsel Overwater?
Thank you, worship. Um, I'm just wondering, who would be in charge of, um, you know, once you put the shovel in the ground, who is in control of the build?
That's, that speaks to both the second and third motion, but it is the town. We are responsible for that. But we want to ensure that we're working with the, the partners that got it to that point.
For sure.
Because there's a number of pieces of in-kind, which are, are great local companies, uh, as well as, uh, they've been working with the Splash Park Association at this point in time. We want to ensure that those relationships and that vision's fulfilled, but we also want to make sure that, uh, because it's our responsibility when it's built, that all the specs and everything, that was almost a question for the other COO, uh, to ensure that that's built, uh, to the standards that we need.
Great, thanks.
Well, the other COO has more of a voice, so from now on, we'll direct our questions to him. Very good. And I would like to conclude, uh, since council's spoken, um, that this is a social and economic impact on our community, in my opinion. Um, I can't, uh, say that, um, in my time as mayor, that I have seen so many people in the community come together so passionately to donate money and step forward, um, to a build, uh, as far as a start, and, uh, we have to recognize that and honor that. Uh, I acknowledge it. I also do understand that we are, um, working in a budget processes ourself, as we've just shared with you, that one tax rate is $80,000. And, uh, there are people in our community, for sure. That will, that will, I, I think, at the end of the day, um, get great pleasure with this type of a build, being able to socially be able to go and, and watch and take part. However, we are going to be, uh, have to be very cautious, um, about where we go in the future, and, and I would hope and pray that the tax, that, uh, the citizens, as well as ourself as council as a whole, and the staff the town holds, continue to be proactive in fundraising for this, to keep this moving. And that's all I have to say at this point, and I really appreciate the presentation and hard work you've done to, to change this for us. Um, and I would ask council then for a, uh, a motion on the floor. Thank you, Counsel Overwater.
Thank you, worship. I move that the 180,000 dollars towards the construction and funding of the old splash park be approved. You want three separate motions, correct?
Okay. Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Those in favor? That is carried. And I would ask for a second motion. Counsel Barishell?
Thank you, worship. I move that to direct administration to work with the Old Splash Park Association to finalize financial design and construction details of the old splash park.
Questions? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Those in favor? That is carried. Counsel Durey?
Thank you, worship. I would move that council direct administration to sign a contract with Plain Park Design Company Limited for the design, supply, installation, construction, and commissioning of an aquatic playground, including all associated equipment at Centennial Park, after verification of Old Splash Park Association finances, that secure cash deposits, cash and equivalents, and in-kind contributions required to fund the construction of the water park.
Was that enough for you? Are there any questions in this regard? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor? That's carried. Mr. McDonald, to you and your team, um, I want to let you know that I will certainly work with our CEO and council on, on finding some answers with regards to the grant, and hopefully we can get an answer before, um, before all the fun starts.
Your worship, your council, thank you very much for having us. Uh, it's been a real challenge, uh, I think for both our, our, our people and our group and our committees, but we've basically done what we said, and we're going to continue to raise those funds we've talked about. So, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess, and that'll give the media a chance if they so wish to speak to Mr. McDonald, and then reconvene in five minutes. Council members, I'd ask you please to move back in your agenda to page 99, item 6B. Item 6B, page 99, Mrs. Land Use Amendment Biplane 2015-09. Uh, Mr. McGinnis?
Thank you, worship. Uh, this is a request for first reading to set a, a public hearing, but I think we're going to ask the, Ms. Kilmann to come up, and, uh, we've talked about this particular item a number of times, and just want to make sure that, uh, there are no further questions before or leading up to first reading of the biplane.
Thank you, Ms. Kilmann, and for yours.
Thank you, your worship. Good evening all. Okay, uh, Land Use Biplane Amending Biplane 2015-09 mainly deals with, uh, section 3.6 of the Land Use Biplane that deals with driveways. And Planning Development is submitting this application never to increase development improvement processing efficiencies by creating a formula for the maximum allowable driveway widths for new developments in all districts, except for light industrial, heavy industrial, and industrial business, where the maximum driveway width is set at 12 meters. Planning Development staff have been examining, um, this topic of driveway widths, especially with regards to residential uses. And, uh, at present, the Land Use Biplane limits the maximum width of a driveway in residential and commercial areas to 10 meters. But on narrow lots, this maximum can pose, pose problems, um, with on-street parking, availability, lack of front yard landscaping, lack of snow storage area, and stormwater management issues. Adversely, on the wider lots with developments with a three-car garage, applicants often feel that 10 meters is just not wide enough for their, for a driveway. Uh, if council recall, Land Use Biplane amendment, um, was passed in November of 2014, that allowed the, um, development officers to grant a relaxation of up to 15%, which of course is discretionary and depends on the merits and context of an application. Uh, this, but however, this does not, uh, address requests for, um, anyway, this, this, proposes instead a allowable maximum driveway width to be established by a formula. So this will help us to provide more clarity with processing applications, and will assist in increasing our front yard landscaping and our snow storage areas, and the availability of on-street parking spaces. So Biplane 2015 is proposing regulating driveways based on the overall frontage of a lot. The maximum driveway width allowed will vary from seven meters to 11 meters, depending on the width of the parcel. For example, this formula will reduce the maximum amount of driveway width coverage in the most narrow lots from 10 meters to seven meters, or 60% of the lot, lot width, whichever is less. The proposal proposes that 11-meter driveways will only be allowed in lots that equal or exceed 18 meters, and are usually, um, requested to, to accommodate the flow of a triple-car garage. Uh, 11-meter driveway is usually sufficient to cover, in most cases, a triple-car garage. So in addition to driveways, this Land Use Biplane amendment also includes a small piece, um, about parking. Currently, the Land Use Biplane has a regulation that prohibits tandem parking, um, in any district, but no definition is provided, and, and it's open to interpretation, basically, and in various scenarios, such as single-car garages with a parking pad. Basically makes all our single-car garages with parking pads non-compliant. So, that being said, the Planning Development staff are recommending that this regulation be deleted from the Land Use Biplane, and it is, as it is viewed, as, um, open to interpretation, extraneous, and it serves no purpose, and limits the, accommodating the off-street parking requirements. Therefore, on page 100 in your agenda, as you see, um, the Land Use Biplane amendments that we are proposing are in Schedule B with regards to supplementary regulations. By deleting, the maximum width of a driveway shall be 10 meters, and adding, the width of a driveway shall be determined using the table below. And, um, you see the table below, it's laid out according to the lot frontage. So, and the lot frontages are divided into three sizes, uh, less than 12.5 meters, uh, 12.6 to 18 meters, and then anything over 18 meters. And then from there, we go to look at, the maximum driveway width allowed will be either seven meters or 60% of the lot frontage, which are, or whichever is less. And in the second category, 10 meters or 60%. And in the last, uh, lot frontage width of 18 meters, um, the maximum driveway width period is 11 meters. And then, of course, in Schedule B, we're requesting or proposing that, um, the section regarding tandem parking be deleted as well. And that concludes my presentation.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, before we go for first reading, um, of this biplane, do we have questions? Well, good. Well, we'll just start and work our way down. Counselor Harper, Counsel Walsh, and Counsel Overwater?
Thank you very much, your worship. Through you to our planning officer, in reference to the maximums, um, I'm going to refer to the 18-meter frontage, which is only 59 feet, and the maximum driveway width would be 36 feet. Would then, um, the development officers still have that 15% relaxation for that particular driveway? Or would the relaxation of 15% be taken away from you?
Yes, through your worship, um, we, that's, that clause still isn't placed in the Land Use Biplane, the variance power is of 15%. Um, but these, these particular scenarios would be on a case-by-case scenario. We would be looking at the availability of on-street parking, how wide is the lot, what kind of access, and what does the neighborhood look like. So it is a variance power, and it's exactly that, it's at the discretion of the development officer.
Supplemental?
So supplemental to that, I don't have my calculator with me, and perhaps, um, Mr. Chanter, Ms. Kilmann has one, but if, at 15%, that could possibly increase a, a driveway width from 36 feet to how many feet at 15%?
Uh, through the chair, 1.5 meters. So it'd be a maximum of 12.5.
So it'd be a maximum of 12.5. But as a development officer said, it is a discretionary powers. It's not automatically granted. If you came in with a proposed for, you know, if you're on a big lot and you're already getting 11 meters, which is ample driveway for a triple-car garage, it would have to be a pretty extenuating argument of why you would need to have anything greater than that. So just because the development officers have the power, it doesn't automatically mean that you'd get that variance.
Perhaps this is more of a comment than a question. I still do wonder why it is that people on wide lots with triple-car garages still feel that they need 36 feet of frontage in order to drive a vehicle onto their lot. I just find that curious, because it's usually only one vehicle at a time, and the vehicle is only so wide, why we have to provide so much feet? And that is what's eliminating all the on-street parking possibilities.
Mr. Chant.
If I may, through the chair. Yeah, definitely on the large lots, but we kind of took the approach of really focusing on the small lots in the destination places and things like that, where currently, they can put a 10-meter driveway in and have just about everything onto concrete. We were looking at it in the reverse, as to how to maintain an on-street parking stall and a narrower driveway in the smaller lots. That's where we're sort of really, this is where this really lends itself to, for, you know, the betterment of that is how to deal with these narrow lots and get just a smaller driveway in, instead of them asking, oh, well, we can go 10 meters, let's put a two-car driveway in. That's where we sort of really like to focus, understand the large lots, but how big a problems are in the narrow lots, too.
Thank you. Councilor Walsh, and then Councilor Overwater.
I guess similar thinking process. I did notice a cul-de-sac in a new development. I drove around there, and I think there was about six homes. Because of the cul-de-sac, all the driveways come out, and pretty well connected all the way around, except for one small spot. You'd need a small car to park there. So there was no on-street parking pretty well for that whole cul-de-sac. That's interesting.
So I'm just curious about how this would work when you have that kind of scenario in front of you in a development. I mean, if you're going to ask for 60 percent of lot frontage in a high-shaped lot. And I'm also agreeing with Councilor Harper, about the 59-plus. I'm thinking we could drop that and go with the variance on a case-by-case for a three-car garage, because I'm kind of agreeable here. I need a big lot, and you've got this big space, they're just looking for parking spots on their front lawn. I'm just curious.
These are great questions, but I would remind council, this is just first reading only for public hearing. And Mr. Chant, and then we'll move down to Ms. Councilor Overwater.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. So, on the large lot, would council have a recommendation what to drop that down to before it goes to, you know, public hearing, the second and third, we could amend?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, that that would be amended downward. Where with the 59 feet, like, since it's flawed to 18, I probably wouldn't go 18-plus, just keep the 32 feet, not go to 36 feet. Use that discretionary 15 percent.
So for clarification, you'd like to see it drop to 10 meters? Yeah. Thank you.
Well, it's an option and a recommendation that could be brought forward. Councilor Overwater, and then Councilor Barishell.
Thank you, Your Worship. I understand the smaller lots with, you know, you're trying to get it on on-street parking. However, I really don't believe that we should have a variance of 15 percent on a 36-foot wide driveway. I don't think I could support that.
Yes, Mr. McGinnis.
So regardless of what's, what we have in this bylaw, there's always going to be the opportunity for applicants to apply for a variance. If it's, if the power's not given to the development officer, it'll go to the Municipal Planning Commission, but we can't prohibit the variance from being requested.
Thank you.
And then Ms. Councilor Barishell, and Councilor Harper.
Then I would have to agree with Councilor Walsh, to drop that down to 32, and then you would have your 15 percent variance.
Thank you. Councilor Barishell.
Thank you. When this whole thing was sort of in response to when Dick Stocker was here, and he made a very logical plea to why that, you know, instead of going through, and we all know that when we sit at MPC, I mean, it's very, very subjective. I support having our development officer make these, make these decisions. I'm not looking for, and I'm not, certainly not a big fan of concrete jungles, but it made nothing but sense when, when we listened to Mr. Stocker here, and with some of the lots, in particular those big ones, and so on. So I, I'll be interested to see, but I think we need to appreciate that, you know, he made a pretty intelligent plea, and to have to go every time to MPC for these variances doesn't seem to make sense to me, because then it's going to be so subjective that some are going to get it, and some aren't going to get it, and I don't really see it being a positive thing.
Councilor Harper?
I agree with Councilor Walsh and Councilor Overwater, that if we just eliminate the over 18-meter lot frontage, and the ability to have 11-meter driveways, I think we'd all be happy. I support the fact that by eliminating that, to bring it down to over 18-meter frontages to the 10 meters, which is 32.8 feet, and still providing the development officer with that ability to grant a 15 percent variance, they do have that ability to, to work with individual property owners one-on-one and do that variance. So I can certainly support that. Is it in mind tonight to make an amendment? Okay. So I would so move that in Schedule B, the lot frontage of more than 18.0 meters, 59 feet, the maximum driveway width be 10 meters. Or 60 percent of, does that make sense? Or I would just put 10 meters? 10 meters, okay?
May I have that motion again, please?
I, you would ask. I so moved that Schedule B, lot frontage, lots over 18.0 meters, which is 59 feet, maximum driveway width is set at 10 meters, which is 36 feet. Oh, 32. Oh, sorry. 32.8.
And that's how many meters?
10.
10.
Just that the effect of that amendment, really, the only thing that it would change in our current Land Use Biolog is the ability to manage the smaller lots down from seven to 10, because 10 meters is what's in our Land Use Biolog now.
Okay, so this is, this is an amendment to Biolog 2015-09. And we'll vote on the amendment. Those in favor, that's carried. Now, I would ask for first reading as amended. Councilor Overwater? Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Your Worship. I move that first reading be given to Biolog 2015-09 with amendment, as amended.
Any further questions or comments? Those in favor, that is carried. And Councilor Barishell, now you can.
Thank you, I moved, sorry.
Public hearing.
I moved that a public hearing for Biolog 2015-09 be set for Monday, April 27, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers.
Thank you. Those in favor, that is carried. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We will now move down to unfinished business, page 102, update old graffiti. Mr. McGinnis.
Shall pass this one off to Mr. Wagstaff with the RFD.
If you can't talk, you can pass it on to your alternate.
I can talk, it's just maybe a whisper. A verbal update on the notice of motion is Biolog and municipal enforcement went around, and they identified as much as they could locations that graffiti existed, so there was, thank you, Your Worship. There was eight locations with 12 pieces of graffiti on them that looked like areas that were going to need to be dealt with. So we then, speaking with municipal enforcement, sat down, and we reviewed sort of how we were addressing graffiti, and then the reality was, it was not on one of the, one of the things that we were actively pursuing. That is, of course, one of the pieces that is in proposed community standards bylaw. But regardless of that, what we sat down and discussed was two things. What happened last, last summer was Larry Wright had, when he was going around talking with businesses, he just asked to grab some graffiti remover, and he was heading it out in the uptown as part of his rotation. So I spoke to Larry and asked him sort of what the response to that was, and it was very positive. So then, again, talking with municipal enforcement, that we get some more of that, and as part, you know, in aligning with part of our new approach, instead of just, you know, hitting these, you know, individual businesses, or, or, most of it is businesses, there wasn't any identified private property, whilst residential property is to approach them from a proactive stance, and say, can you try this stuff out, and let us know how it, how it works? And then moving forward, going out and dedicating a day each month, where that is the focus, where they just do nothing but focus on that. Yes, if they see things, is they're touring around to deal with it, but to actually take a day out, and that's what you put your, your lens on to look for, and then begin to address it. So again, there was eight locations within, within town that they had identified where there was graffiti, and I would suggest that that's, that's the, the practice that we're going to get into with municipal enforcement, is not only will they do it on the, on the rounds to keep an eye open for it, but to actually take a day, and that's where they dedicate it, go out and actually look and see what they can find.
Thank you for that update. Does council have any questions? Councilor Barishell.
Thank you. Do you know what the response was from some of the business owners that have had ongoing graffiti problems that, and have been, it hasn't been cleaned up in a, well, in a timely fashion? Was there an opportunity for the bylaw enforcement to speak to them?
Not at this point in time, so that's our next stage, is to actually now go back with these eight locations and speak with them. Before I sent them back, I didn't want them going back empty-handed, so we're going to get some of that graffiti remover, and so they have, they come bearing gifts, not just a ticket book, you know, and that they would be received that way, that they're there as a, as a helpful hand, and not a, not a strong hand.
Would you like to receive this ver information?
Sure, I'll do that. I'd like to receive the report on graffiti presented by administration, be accepted as information.
Those in favor, that's carried. Thank you, Mr. Wagstaff. And now we have a verbal update on the process for walk-in clinic. Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you. I've had the opportunity to talk with Mary Turner, who is the manager of the clinic, and Dr. Steve Turner. They have considered a number of different scenarios for their early morning walk-in, but each of them sort of had their own issues, and I talked specifically about the suggestion of a pull ticket. But the question was, when do you put the pull ticket out? Do you leave it out overnight? And if not, are people just going to line up? If you make the tickets available at 8 o'clock, are people going to start lining up at 7 o'clock so they can get the first ticket? So part of this, I think, is some people need to be first in line. So if they, even if they start opening the doors a little bit earlier, people will still line up. So the discussion that we had was the, the utility of the walk-in clinic, and it's not for those that are in dire need of emergency services, that's why the emergency center is open. So they've talked about a lot of things, but they really have not landed on a strategy that would be any more effective than what they do now. But they're certainly open to possibilities, and instead of, if there was anything that came out of the discussion tonight, I could bring it back to them for their consideration.
Councilor Overwater?
Thank you, Your Worship. Is it, okay, if, if they can't do the ticket thing, are they, I know one morning when I was standing there freezing, there was a gentleman there that had stated that, one of the walk-in clinics in Calgary, they at least had a, like a radiant heater that was programmed to come on at whatever time, 7:30, say. And at least then, you know, I mean, I can stand there, I'm sick, but I can stand there and deal with that, but I don't believe that some of our seniors should have to stand there like that in a cattle lineup, freezing. They could, they, I believe they could at least put a radiant heater up there that's timed, turn it off at 8:15 or 8:20 when they open those doors. There's no reason why there couldn't be a bench there for them to sit on. I don't think that's asking too much of the clinic to do that.
Thank you, Councilor Harper.
I'm sorry that I missed this original discussion, but it sounded like it was very interesting. Okay. Okay, great. In reference to walk-ins, and there was a very interesting article in the Calgary Herald approximately two weeks ago about the duties that doctors should be providing to their patients. One of those was extended hours. And I'm just wondering if perhaps the private clinic and OLS could be offering after-hours, clinic hours, like after 5 o'clock in the evening, and until 8 or 9 o'clock? Because what I recognize is that there's a lot of people that go to the emergency of the OLS hospital, when it really isn't an emergency, it's basically, they just need to see a doctor. There's a number of clinics in other communities that have after-hours, like after 6 o'clock hours. We are in a society where people work different work schedules. There's lots of stores that are open until 10, 11 o'clock at night, people work shift work, and we, I believe that the private medical clinic is not recognizing the various lifestyles of people in their work schedules. And perhaps a way to alleviate the morning lineup is by offering evening hours, Monday to Friday.
So I believe that's in the works, and I believe that's part of the strategy to manage the, the facility and the capacity of the facility, and the fact that new doctors are coming on. So the facility doesn't have the capacity to have all of the doctors all at the same time practicing, so my understanding is that alternate hours is something that's being considered.
Yes, Councilor Overwater?
Thank you, Your Worship. So they're being, that's being considered, so does that mean that they're going to consider it for another year, or are they in the process of really getting that together and going to have extended hours?
I'm not intimately involved. They're professional practice of the physicians, and they've had the discussion amongst themselves. And part of that discussion is, is it time for a second facility? facility with the new physicians coming on? And they think not. They think that they can alter their hours and each of the doctors manage their client list with extended hours. So that's my understanding of the strategy that is being worked on.
Counsel D'Arcy?
Thank you, Worship. Just a couple of comments. One is with the seniors, I know that those in the lodges are visited by the doctors from time to time, well, I think on a weekly basis, because I saw the schedule just in there yesterday as well, too. So, but there are people who do need to come to see the doctors in the morning. I understand that. I was thinking about some kind of call-in service where they could call in and receive a time to come in, starting at, I think they start at 8:30. And if people could call in saving themselves having to wait to wait outside, because I mean, 7:44 this morning, I saw people out there waiting. But if people would be willing to call in for a time, if they had an operator or a staff member on service starting at 7:15, 7:30, people could call in and make or get appointments to see those doctors in the thing, in the walk-in clinic, is a thought.
So all these things that impact the operating costs of the facility, natural gas for radiant heat, additional staffing for hours other than they work now, are things that have a cost attached to them?
Counsel Harper, Counsel Barry Shell, and then Counsel Overwater?
Well, I feel a little bit uncomfortable today speaking about a private business and having our CAO make the comments, because I don't believe that, you know, and I know that he's being very cautious about his comments. But I'm just wondering if perhaps the owners of our private medical clinic had been afforded the opportunity to come so that they could maybe hear firsthand. They had probably brainstormed and brainstormed these very comments that we've heard. And like I said, I'm feeling very uncomfortable that we have not had afforded the opportunity to our private medical clinic to come and speak with us at a P&amp;P meeting or even at a main camera session. So I would welcome them to perhaps come and talk to us about their challenges. And if it'd be as a main camera session, that's all okay with me. So that's my comment right now.
Counsel Overwater?
Thank you, Worship. I guess when you talk about costs, I'm thinking radiant heat for two hours in the morning in the winter months. I don't think that would be that big of an imposition on that clinic.
Thank you. Counsel Barry Shell?
Thank you, Worship. This comes down to basically a fundamental lack of competition in our community. That this, that the clinic operates the way it does. I don't pretend to know what their challenges are. I can only guess. I have had conversations with, you know, doctors and nurses and whether or not the fact that there can be another clinic to compete, so that they're competing against each other and they have to, they have to start offering, like Counselor Harper mentioned, extended hours. I think something has to happen to that regard. And I don't know if that's a pipe dream or what. But the fact remains, healthcare is somewhere in the neighborhood of 45% of the provincial budget. And we are forcing people, because they can't fit in that window, to go, and the number I was given was triple the cost, because they cannot go to our walk-in clinic. They're going down to our emergency and they're not being, and they can't be turned away and the cost is triple. I mean, where in the sense, where's the sense in that? And I agree with Counsel Harper. This isn't, you know, I appreciate Mr. McGinnis's patience with this, because it's not, you know, he's answering questions and something he has no control over, but he can pass it on. But, you know, we really need to put some pressure on somehow, some way to get this. We need to get our costs down, number one, and we need some competition in our community if our clinic will not realize that there is some real need in our community for some flexibility. And the one walk-in clinic I used to frequent in Edmonton had a walk-in space, you know, you were able to walk in throughout the day and they had a combination of walk-in. But, you know, for an hour in the morning just is, just seems unrealistic in today's world.
Thank you. I'll just ask Mr. McGinnis if he could have a conversation as to whether they would be able to attend a P&amp;P and/or in camera session with council?
I will, but I'd like to make a couple of comments. I believe Counsel Walsh and I sat on the committee that had a look at the recommendations for attraction and retention of physicians. And this was, this is going back a few years, but two things. Competition is not a panacea. When we had a second clinic in town, it was the source of much frustration. The second thing is walk-in clinics, one of the things that we've learned through our research is that the cadre of doctors now really are working good together on a number of things. And emergency room and on-call are the two things. And one of the things that they told us would upset that would be a group come in, open up a walk-in clinic and not take responsibility for emergency room or on-call rotation. So my point is, it's a complex issue. And yes, we need to hear from those that are in the trenches and in our livingness. And I would support inviting them to a meeting.
Thank you. We'll move forward. We don't need a motion for that. Page 103, please. Item 8A, Mountain View Emergency Shelter Society Land Lease. Mr. McGinnis?
Thank you, Worship. We did have Roberta Hammer at the last P&amp;P meeting and council has had an opportunity to go through the lease. In a nutshell, it's a 30-year term with two 10-year renewables. And the terms were based on the useful life of the building that they proposed to build. So at the end of the 50 years, there will be no useful life left in that building. And we don't have to give up the land, but we can facilitate this happening.
Yes, this was brought to our P&amp;P meeting and council has reviewed this and asked this to be brought back. And of course, the 30-year lease would commence, how did that work?
Upon signing.
Upon signing. That's correct. So can I get a motion, please? Counsel Walsh?
Yeah, I would like to move that the land lease between Mountain View Emergency Shelter Society and the Town of Oles for the construction of a building to offer programs and services as an emergency shelter, that be approved for signature.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments? Those in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you. Item 8B, page 127, Spring Fling Request for Proclamation. Who would like to put that on the floor? Counsel Barry Shell?
Thank you, Worship. I move that Friday, April 10, 2015, be proclaimed as Spring Fling in Oles.
Wow. That means lots. That's pretty exciting, though. It's the first annual, I would hope. Any questions? Those in favor? That is Carrie. Thank you. Page 135, and this is Bill 20, Municipal Government Act Amendments. Mr. McGinnis?
Thank you, Worship. I see that Kelly has stuck it out, so I'd invite her to come up to the microphone and just say a couple of, you know, I, to be honest, myself, and I've been quite immersed in the MGA review process, and I really didn't understand this framework. So it was an interesting read that it's all going to start in the fall of 2015 and take about a year to go through the process. So Kelly, is there a quick overview?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Your Worship, members of council. The report that you have in front of you is a consolidation of information from Municipal Affairs. And the government of Alberta tabled the first round of amendments and they were consensus issues. If you remember from our last discussion regarding the MGA, there was going to be a few phases. And there were 54 issues that were outlined from Municipal Affairs as a result of all of the consultations in the province. So now we get to move forward to March 16th, to which the government tabled the first round of amendments. These amendments were approximately 14. And in your consolidated information, the issue number related to the area of issues that were identified goes back, correlates back to the 54 pieces that they took a look at. So when you take a look at the 14, there's 40 left to go in the fall, and they're the more contentious issues. These ones were tabled at consensus. When you take a look at all of the issues that are identified in this document, I think that Oles should really be proud of the fact that you're cut ahead already. If these suggested changes go through, there's quite a few areas of the issues that were identified that Oles already participates and moves forward in, such as developing and adopting a code of conduct for council is one. The other is public participation policy. There's already a public engagement policy in place for the Town of Oles. So as you go through the document, you can see that there are fairly minor changes. The ones that are going to be coming up in the fall that are way more contentious include items such as industrial property. There's a number of issues identified there, farm property, and property assessment and taxes.
Yes, thank you. Questions at this time? You did an excellent job. I'm sorry I didn't notice that you were waiting. I could have moved you up on the agenda. My apologies. Counsel D'Arcy?
Thank you, Worship. Under the proposed issue number six, which is on page 136 of our agenda, the last bullet, it says do not, it says require all municipalities to develop and adopt code of conduct that do not allow councils to remove counselors from office. Can you just explain that just a little bit more?
Well, I'd have to go back and take a look at these items in particular, just going back to the original document here.
Yeah, sure. Yes, we can help. Counsel D'Arcy?
So that was a major issue at the recent Mayor's Caucus. And part of the original suggestion was that council should have the opportunity or the ability to remove a council member, think Rob Ford, if required. But the wisdom in the room said, no, councils are elected by the public and it can only be the public that unseats them.
That's correct. All right.
Thank you.
No further questions? Do I have a motion from someone on this? Counsel Overwater?
Thank you, Worship. I move that the Bill 20 Municipal Government Act Amendments report be received for information.
Thank you. Those in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you. It'll be interesting to see what happens there. Now your handout, your Small Community Grant Application Network for Neighbors. Mr. McGinnis?
Thank you, Worship. And this, this particular RFD is in front of you with a whole lot of frustration, basically around the timeframe that we had to coordinate this. But part of this particular application is heavily weighted to regional partnerships. So we really had to roll up our sleeves and work with the Town of Sundry and Mountain View County to garner those points for this application. So the application is to complete the drops for our fiber network and also to fund drops for just over 1,400 residents of our properties in Sundry and 65 properties in the industrial park adjacent to Sundry. So they haven't built the network in Sundry yet, but this application is for their drops and to complete our drops. And it's about $5.9 million is what the application is. So we had a good look at the criteria. There were a number of projects that we thought we could apply for, but with the weight of the regional partnerships heavily considered in this grant application, this was the best grant that we thought we could put together in the time we had allowed.
Well said. And the time you had allowed was very short. So well done. Counsel Harper?
So I'm presuming this is to help fund the remaining drops for Oles Fiber?
It is.
Okay. And the project for Mountain View County, is that the West Industrial Park outside of Sundry?
It is. We considered Nautook, but we just did not have the time to put together the numbers for that application.
I wholly support this, especially for the West Industrial Park at Sundry as compared to Nautook, because it still gives us an economic advantage.
We're all the same communities. Any further questions or comments?
Just real thanks to both Kelly and Sterling McLeod has been integral in helping us, as well as Tony Martins from Mountain View County and Dave Tabasikus from Sundry. So help all around.
Absolutely. Congrats to all of them. Who would like to make that? Counsel Overwater?
Thank you, Worship. I'll move that in a partnership between the Town of Oles, the Town of Sundry, and Mountain View County, council supports the application for a small communities fund grant for the project titled Networking Neighbors.
All right. And the deadline for that is tomorrow?
The deadline is April 2nd, but it needs a resolution from council from each of the three parties. So it's at Oles and Sundry this evening and County on Wednesday.
Thank you.
One point that I may make, in the application, it says 34% town, 33%. That will likely change, and it will likely change to, we have 2,900 drops, Sundry has 14, and the county has 65. So it probably will be proportional is how that will end up.
Any further questions? Those in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you. Okay, we're down to reports at this time. It is the end of the month. And perhaps I'll start this time with Counsel Overwater.
Thank you, Worship. We had our Waste Commission meeting today, and these are some of the highlights. We had a few highlights, actually. Commission members voted to accept the service review recommendations from the CAO's group as information. Commission agreed to work with the CAO groups to compile new bylaws to govern the commission. The data set as May 31, 2015 to determine if municipalities were in or out. This will be determined by new governance bylaws approved. And if all six municipalities do not sign on them, that will determine those who do not will not be part of the commission going forward, as this will rescind the old agreement. New reserve accounts have been set up to put aside funds for the three reserves we have approved. Funds will be transferred to them as surpluses are achieved. Our financials show at the end of Feb, we had a surplus of 347,000. Part of this is a third of the requisition revenue of 99,000, which should reflect as a revenue for March. Also, there is no amortization in these financials for January and February. They're still being calculated. We reviewed a chart that was done by some board members that shows the following. In 2014, municipal rural pickup lost 168,320. And in 2015, it is looking to lose 47,000 based on the new fee schedule. In 2014, landfill lost 430,000. And in 2015, it will lose 343,000. The transfer site lost 108,000 in 2015 and will lose 52,000 in, with the new fee schedule. 2014 recycling lost 427,000 and 2015 is looking to lose 211,000. These numbers do not take the requisition amounts into consideration for offsetting the cost of the landfill, which requisitions in 2015 are covering 340,000 and recycling requisition of 277. We had an extensive discussion on what the cost could be for a municipality approved by Municipal Affairs to exit the business. Greg Weens provided us with some numbers of the liability cost, but our board determined it was too difficult to come up with exact numbers. As the numbers of what the province has put in over the years and what assets would be worth was found to be, some of the assets are worth less than we owe against them. The board has left this number to come from Municipal Affairs after the May 31 deadline. It has been indicated that the county will be reviewing the letter to request our financial services contract to be extended to December 31. Mountain View Rep indicated that her recommendation to the council will be to extend the contract to September 30 and that the county has no interest in providing a new to September 30th and that the county has no interest in providing a new tender for this future service. We have agreed to go with the option of $6,000 for a patch repair to our walking floor at the Ols transfer site. We didn't feel we had the money to make a large repair or purchase a new floor, which is about $111,000. We've accepted the letter from Didsbury dated January 4th, 2015 and indicated that the Didsbury rep understood the responses of the commission and he will address those with his counsel. Landfill tonnage is up from February 2014. We took in 2,257 tons on cell two and 238 tons on cell three. We also received 6,400 tons of contaminated soil. Cost savings, insurance savings of $4,000 a year as equipment was insured, but we did not own them anymore. Tell us bill, we had 14 phones, we don't have anymore. We canceled and saved $8,000. Office rent will be going from $3,000 plus utilities to $1,000 complete with utilities included in that, so there's a savings of $30,000. And we'll be doing a tour of our transfer sites as our Ols transfer site has some major structural problems that we need to get fixed sooner than later. And that will probably cost a lot of money. That's it.
Thank you. All right. Is there any questions? That was lengthy. I wanted to catch the questions first. Okay, Council Walsh?
Yeah, we had a couple meetings so far this month. First one was on February 6th, February, Friday 6th, March. Cape had their community needs advisory committee come to Ols and they were hosted by Ols College and received a tour of Ols College. And everybody in that committee, mostly economic developers and people from their communities who represent economic development. And they were quite impressed with Ols and what we've accomplished here, especially through the CLC and what we have available in this community. So that was an eye-opener for a lot of central Alberta economic development officers who can now recommend Ols as a development place. Also, on March 12th, Ols Tech Committee or OI Tech Committee met. ONET has completed their business plan for this coming year. Right now, at that point in time, they needed about 599 new customers to hook up during this year, by the end of the year, to what they feel they can meet their breakeven point. January, February, they had about 24 walk-in customers just off the street. They haven't been advertising, so even though these people couldn't get hooked up, then they came in and made their deposits. And hopefully this continues throughout the year and they can meet the 599 new connections for ONET. Also had a meeting.
Before you go on about ONET, that does not include the 450 beds for the Ols College that will be coming on board in September?
That's...
For ONET? Because they're all a separate hookup?
No, that is a one, like that's, it's a multi-unit development and it's beneficial, but I think it's still considered as a one drop because it is a one contract with the managers of that thing. But if students sign up independently for a bigger package, then it will become an individual number for ONET. At least that's my understanding at this point. If I'm wrong, I'll let you know. Also, just this past Friday, Cape hosted a, helped host a clean energy workshop. And it was quite the eye-opener from my point of view on clean energy. Sometimes you just kind of think clean energy is like windmills and solar panels and that. But they have a whole slew from coal generation to all kinds of different energy things that can be done in a community. So they basically educated on what those will be done and they also provide you tools to assess if it would work for your community or not. So that was quite helpful. The most interesting part was that photovoltaics is getting to the point where it's economical. For places like in Alberta with high cost of electricity and lots of sunshine and low space and the price of them have come down substantially in the last couple of years to the point where they were, I think they're down to 60 cents a panel almost, or per watt, not a panel. So they feel that if electric prices keep going up the way they have been, it will be economical feasible to create, I guess they call them, you know, farms that will host a lot of, you can do 10 megawatt farms for photovoltaics. And it costs quite a bit of money to do that, but it was an interesting concept. I also attended Red Deer Regional Municipal, or what do you call it, Municipal Water User Group. We had some people coming from Watersmart, it's an Alberta department. They modeled the Red Deer River. And there's quite a bit of water in there still to allocate for development. And they give a bunch of different scenarios about growth along the Red Deer River and the demand on the Red Deer River. And they're saying with climate change, the Red Deer River will benefit, the more water will flow through this. But the bad part of that, it flows through sooner, so you get it early in the year and by the end of the year it kind of peters out and dries up. And any substantial growth would require building of a new dam to accommodate holding water back to disperse later in the year. And not a huge dam, much smaller than Dixon Dam, but something that we'd have to look at going into the future. And we're talking 10, 20 years to even start thinking of that. But that was an interesting scenario that they brought forward. And that's it.
Thank you. I've attended the CLC, which I reported on earlier, and also attended the Citizens on Patrol and as well as Mayor Doll. And they are looking for new members desperately. So if you know of anyone who might be interested, please let me or Council Harper know and we will certainly help to pass their names along. They are struggling to have people out on any of the ride-alongs. So if you know of someone or if you care to come out on one, then please let us know. And Fire Commission, and I'll let our Chair, Rudy Duryea, report on that one. And I just saw this, as the Alberta Recreation and Parks Association just sent this through the mayor, but I'm not sure if we even do any of these, the rec focus for indoor pools, like have we done any of these projects through them? Rec metrics, healthy food environments?
Yes to both, yes to both of those.
Yes, we have.
I had asked Michelle last week on that, so yes, we have.
Yeah, you're sounding, yeah. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
I'll just add a little more to the Citizens on Patrol before. Their annual AGM is the third Tuesday, which is May 19th at 6:00 PM. It is potluck, so you're welcome to go. And they ask that you don't bring any meat, because other people are actually supplying that. So you'll need that date of May 19th. They also reported that Alberta is the only province that Citizens on Patrol are not funded. And I believe that's all you really need to know at this point. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Council Harper?
Thank you very much. And I thank Mayor Doll and Council Bennett for attending Citizens on Patrol with me while I was out of country. And I did attend the Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting last week. And Mr. Doug Reberger is the president for 2015. And there are new board members that were already reported from a few weeks ago as well. And I also like to thank Mr. Duryea, Council Duryea, for attending the annual general meeting of the Chamber of Commerce, West Chamber of Commerce. So he'll perhaps provide some more information for that. And to let you know, I, this is for Council Walsh, while I was out of country, I did do some homework for council. And I did in fact pass a number of solar farms, which are very interesting, by the way. And the concern about the Red Deer River and the knowledge that the Red Deer River is going to be playing a very important role in the future to Alberta's, I think that we really have to take a look at. When you look at the Colorado River and the source of water for the Colorado River and the fact that now not one drop of water of the Colorado River and its massive size actually reaches the ocean due to irrigation and the cities. So I thought that was very important to find out and it's something that we can say that's about our future too. So thank you.
Council Bearshell?
Thank you. I attended the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. I was, yeah, that was fun. I enjoyed that, as always. At the Mountain View Water, or at the Water Commission, we had, the draft financials were presented and things were good, typical. Nothing to report there. They're working on the agreement with the county to supply water and they're just coming up with a number and the agreement went to the county. So they'll, I'm sure have some, more discussion as far as that goes. And then there's still the legal battle with Correx, which is the company that supplied the valves, some faulty valves that, so that's ongoing as well. I've reported on that in the past, but just an update that it's still ongoing. And we reviewed the business plan. Last time it was reviewed was 2011 and there was some talk around, we sort of started this conversation about a succession plan moving forward. So we've begun the process of reviewing the business plan.
Do we get, did they get their financial statements done? Usually we, don't we ask for the Water Commission's financial statements? Yeah, okay, draft, okay. Thanks. And Council Duryea?
Thank you. I appreciate that. I too attended the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. Thank you very much, Mayor. That was a wonderful morning. I wasn't able to attend the entire thing, but nevertheless I heard good things from it. To add to Councilor Harper's Chamber of Commerce meeting, I did attend the AGM. Apparently they lost the business of Banner. And another point is they can't do 50-50s. I don't know if they were trying to do, but anyway they said they couldn't. From the Treasury, there was a loss of $3,400. And so they're looking at an increase, the first time in 20 years, a 5% effective in 2016 for chamber fees, I believe. And so, yeah, it's correct, they do have new, well, not new, but they have new board members, but the president is the same and the treasurer is the same from the Commerce In your package, there is the Fire Committee meeting notes on page 144. And just very quickly, the Fire Committee is looking at getting a new radio system called, I don't know what it's called, AFFRC, a radio system. But the reason they're doing is because a lot of the, they need better communication amongst the inter-agencies and it will provide a broader range of area coverage for areas such as Big Horn. And so they're moving to that. And there's a cost and they are looking to fund that out of their reserves. And they also will be purchasing some new breathing apparatuses. Those are quite old and they need to replace those, have more updated ones. And they're going to work in conjunction with other fire committees, Didsbury, Crimona, because they are also down some breathing apparatuses. And so that money will come out of reserves and will be funded by them, I believe. They also talked about inviting John Heine, who was, he attended the regional chief meeting on February 24th and talked about first, medical first response and some of the changes. And Chief Thompson is thinking about inviting John Heine to come to council to talk about that to us, because you know, we had questions about first responders. They are fixing up an old RAV truck, making a utility truck with a flat deck. And the reason they're doing that is because when they go out on responses, particularly on the highway, they want to make sure that those people, those firefighters who are working on the highway, those people out there working, have signage for advanced warning. So they would have a sign on the back of their truck saying, "There's an accident up ahead, please slow down," kind of a thing. And so they're going to use that truck for that particular purpose. And I thought it was really good. And I was asked to take a question to the Fire Committee about the number of echo level medical calls in the Town of Ols. And I was told that there were 12 last year or approximately one per month. So what else do I want to say about that? I think that is it. I'm going to keep going here, I'm sorry. I had a bunch of meetings here. Before you, you should have, we had our Ols Municipal Library Annual Meeting and I gave you a brochure that is the annual report. Please look that over. We went through it and it gives a good report on a lot of the things that are happening with the Ols Municipal Library. They had elections and guess who voted the chair?
Me.
Yeah, I was. But we have a number of members there that are willing to work and the board is getting bigger and it's exciting. And I think good things are happening at the Ols Municipal Library. So if you have any questions, just fire them away. I'm trying to go fast, so I'm going to work a bit overtime here. Parkland Community Planning Services, we're doing a big marketing strategy. We've approved the logo for Parkland Community Planning Services. They're working with a company called Refraction or something, Reflection, anyway. So we're working on the rest of that as well, too. They're also working on trying to get other municipalities to be a part of Parkland Community Services. And they have good communications and hopes for Devon, Iraikana and Lamont County. And they're also doing some follow-up work with La Combe County and Red Deer County to come on board as members. We're looking for a grant. Our director gave a call to Municipal Affairs and they say that the grants are still in queue, there's still money there. And we're going to keep calling to find out where we are in that line and see if we can get some more money for the GIS and for the office purchase. We already have money for the marketing strategy, that comes out of a grant as well, too. We struck a finance committee a couple meetings ago. They have met, they're looking at the history of the finances of Parkland Community Services. They want to look at models that are out there to see how they can best operate and find a way maybe to share expenses. So our finance committee is working on that as well, too. I think that's pretty general. Yep, so I think that's it, your worship.
Thank you. I will, Council Walsh, do you have a question?
No question, but I could fill in the rest of the names of the Chamber of Hoynes of the Iguana, but other than that, please.
Another, I would like to be a little brief then with all the reports that were given here tonight. One other add-on that we had from Citizens on Patrol that I would like to ask Mr. McGinnis and that was brought up is a request from them was our Town of Ols bylaw officer, Joe Reed, was unavailable, but... officer, Joe Reed, was unavailable, but had said, uh, had a discussion with him with regards to the speed sign. They seem to believe that the speed sign is working, and I am under the understanding it doesn't work. Does anybody know? Okay.
It does not work?
It does not work, because what ha, what transpired was they thought that they were gonna be able to use the speed sign when they have their, um, when they have their crime prevention trade show. And I said that, uh, Joe needed, or somebody needs to contact them and tell them it's unavailable and does not work.
However, there might be one, I'll check with Joe, but there may be one here by...
Okay, Rachel. I have a phone number and a name that I can certainly give you to contact. Good. Um, Mountain View Housing, uh, Mountain View, Mountain View Seniors Housing, um, we have some key messages that I wanted to share with you, however speaking, um, they are not going to be made available until our next council meeting, which is April 13th, because there's some information coming from the provincial government and it's a major announcement. And as a board, we will have to wait, uh, until that comes out after Thursday. So that won't be coming, um, out, and let me see, whatever else. I had the opportunity again to attend Deer Meadow, uh, Grade 6, this time it was a different theme, they were actually having a political election themselves. So, um, uh, it was good to give them some pointers and to listen to what they were talking about for platforms, and it was great. Mayor's Caucus in Edmonton, um, I have a full report on my computer in my office that died, but I can share, and I will bring, uh, bring one back at the next council meeting, but, uh, it was well-attended, it was a pilot project for three days this time with big cities and, and, uh, the larger communities. Um, it was interesting, you do learn a lot more when you have, uh, the bigger towns and, and cities there. We talked about, uh, the typical things of brownfields and, um, political election strategies and, you know, um, responses that we should be talking about for the, uh, Budget for 2015 Survey, Rail Safety, MGA Review, a lot of the things that were on the table from, uh, previous Mayor's Caucuses. So I'll pull the report that I typed on my computer and highlight what I need to share from there. Uh, Accredited Supports, I, uh, was privileged to be able to attend the 30-year retiree celebration for Linda Maxwell, and, uh, it was, uh, very nice, nicely done. Uh, 30 years and each year, uh, they did a progress on what Accredited Supports has done for the community and themself, and, uh, it's so nice to know that the inclusion made, um, with the Accredited Supports clients into the businesses in the community has been such a success. Uh, at one time, they were told that, uh, they didn't want to do it, and now they are extremely happy to have them onboard. It was a lovely banquet. Hockey, uh, Galen probably knows better than I do, but the, the double A Provincial Hockey Banquet, uh, where Bruce Rowe attended from Provincial Government and myself, um, was attended by 420 young boys that were very eager to get on to their next day. And it was, it was a wonderful presentation. The keynote speaker drove all the way from Edmonton, her husband works for, um, the Edmonton, I'm gonna say Eskimos, yes, Edmonton Eskimos, once was Calgary, and they had to move to Edmonton for the type of work he does, and she had a beautiful presentation for the young lads for about 40 minutes, and she came back and sat down after eight minutes and said, "I think they're done." And, uh, it was wonderful. I, I, all the, all the kudos to the students and, and Mr. McGinnis, of course, and, uh, roughed quite a few of those games, and we attended a couple of them myself, and it was great hockey, and I'm sure Galen was there as well, and also attended the Olds College Meat Market Grand Opening on Sanity, and it's a fabulous, uh, fabulous meat market, and the Mountview County had, uh, put, uh, some money and partnered up with them, and I would encourage everybody and anybody to, uh, take a look at what they've got. Um, I'm just gonna leave it at that. I don't believe, oh, the only other thing, uh, was that we did have, uh, a quick meeting on Friday with, um, the Mayor, Tom Rowett, uh, he's from, um, Perry Street, Ontario. Well, he's from Ontario Township of, I can't say the name, Skugog? Skugog? Uh, we had a fabulous, on-the-spot, uh, meeting, uh, with regards to the possibilities of O-NET, and he has a huge interest in the town of Olds, and we're getting these calls almost, uh, weekly now from other municipalities from all around, uh, the province in Canada. So, I'm gonna leave it at that. Uh, any questions or comments from anybody? Yes, please.
Thank you, I move that the reports from councils, authorities, boards, commissions, committees, and task forces ending March 23rd, 2015 be received for information.
Thank you. All those in favor? That's carried, thank you. We'll move down to the quarterly reports, please, page 182. Uh, who would like to put a motion on the floor for that, Counsel Duryea?
Thank you, Worship. I would move that the financial report for the two-month period, January 1st, 2015, to February 28th, 2015, be accepted for information.
Thank you. Does Council have questions? Counsel Harper?
Just a question of Mr. Lucas, is there anything that we should be concerned about in reference to expenditures or revenues? And what is the target? Supposed to be about 11%, 9%?
Actually, because we're, this is up to the end of February, so it should be about 16 and a half percent, so, um, if you look at the total revenues, we're about 6% and total expenditure's about 9%. Now, there's a, there's a few functions that are, are above the 16%, but those are the ones that have the requisitions from various boards, and so it's a big lump sum payment early in the year. No, there's nothing, uh, nothing untoward with this. We're, so far, we're doing very, very well.
Yes, Counsel Duryea?
Thank you, Worship. Um, through the chair to, um, our Chief Financial Officer. Uh, on page 184, I was looking at note number two. Taxes outstanding as of February 28th, uh, 313, 312, well, $313,000. How are we dealing with that?
That's, that's a fairly long conversation. And, um, there is a process outlined by the MGA. Anything beyond two years in arrears, we put lean on the property. Uh, anything beyond three years in arrears, we, to start a tax sale process. And, and so eventually it is recoverable, but it does take time.
Yeah, I just wanted to be counsel aware that, uh, there's one property that's, uh, responsible for at least one-third of that total cost.
And once they're made aware, typically they come right off the tax rule immediately, but, uh...
Yeah, so the, the register has to be notified by March 31st, so we have our tax arrears list, uh, going to the province on Friday.
Quite quickly. All right, any further questions? We have a motion from Counsel Duryea on the floor, those in favor? That's carried, thank you very much. And Accounts Payable, page 187, Counsel Harper, would you like to put that on the floor, please?
Sure. Move that, um, that the February 1st, 2015 to February 28th, 2015 Accounts Payable Report be received for information.
Thank you. Questions? No, she's been away, so there's no questions. All right, call for the vote, those in favor? That's carried, thank you. Correspondence, page 194. Counsel Bennett, are you ready to make a motion over there?
Thank you. Thank you, Worship. I move that the correspond, is that the one I'm on?
Yeah.
Is it friendly? Okay.
Page, uh, 194.
194. That, I move that the correspondence, correspondence and information report ending March 23rd, 2015, be received for information.
Thank you. Does Council have questions? Counsel Duryea?
Not a question, but just a comment. I, I did forget earlier, um, about Parkland Regional Library Board Meeting, and there is correspondence with regards to the highlights of the last board meeting that I attended in there.
Thank you. Um, any further questions or comments? All right, uh, so what you will be seeing from the Mountain View Seniors Housing is the same thing in here, uh, key messages, although it'll be for March. All right, motion on the floor, those in favor? That's carried. Now, um, we're gonna have to take a five-minute recess then for questions from the media, and then we will be moving in camera for a legal, um, item.
Olds Community TV, your go-to channel for news and information in Olds, Alberta.